Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting for the town of Tustin for May 11th, 2021. Please join me in the place to apply. We have no announcements, but we do have one correspondence that came today. From Assemblywoman Aileen Gunther, sent a congratulatory note, what a great idea for our environment regarding the horse dedication. And she sent that today, and that will be forwarded to the Tustin Energy Committee for the work that they've done.
I think she was actually online.
She was, she was on Zoom that day. I saw you there too. Our payment of bills, our general account expended $38,856.62. Highway expended $53,229.45. Water $12,771.99. The sewer district $14,577.96. The lighting district $304.18 for a total of $119,740.20. Jill, you and Bruce went through the bills, any questions or comments on them?
Nope, all good.
Well, you look good to me.
Entertaining motion to pay the bills is presented.
I'm so moved.
I have a motion from Al to pay the bills is presented.
Second, second.
I have a second from Jill. Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I am an I. I'm on the wrong one. And I'm going to turn the floor to our guest speaker, Stephen Walker, from the Sullivan West Central School District. He is the superintendent. Yeah, come on, come on up. Cause that's, that's the speaker, so you can.
Got it, okay, well, it doesn't make me look slim, but nothing would. Technology works that kind of miracles, I understand. Good evening, folks, and thank you for just a moment of your time. As was introduced, I'm Steve Walker, I'm the proud superintendent of the Sullivan West School District. On behalf of all the Bulldogs, I wanted to invite and encourage all attendees at this meeting, who are registered voters, to vote on the school district budget and board election one week from today, Tuesday, May 18th, from 12 to 9:00 PM. Obviously, Tustin residents would vote right here in the library as we look forward to a school year that would resemble one that we were all accustomed to and want to see again as we emerge from the pandemic in September. We're very proud of the work that's gone into constructing this budget. It offers the lowest tax levy increase in past several years in the school district. And in doing so, increases programming at both schools, offers a new Spanish language program for all students at the elementary school, full-time occupational therapists to support students with special needs in both of our schools, increases our elective courses for students, including drone piloting, honors English, podcasting, and a number of others at the high school, new extracurricular activities at the high school, including a competitive archery team and a future Farmers in America Club, and adds significantly to our technology, both devices and our infrastructure, new wiring, new Wi-Fi access points. We know we, our schools need those things for our kids to continue to be the class of the region in the classroom and out the way that they are. We're very much looking forward to hearing from the community next week, Tuesday, on the budget, and I thank you so much for your time this evening.
Question.
Yes, of course.
What's the plan for graduation this year with this current situation?
Great question, graduation will be fully in-person for all 66 of our graduates. We have to comply, of course, with the Department of Health requirements, so in order to keep the crowd under 500, we're looking to have each graduate bring about five members of their family, but it will be in-person. Plan for Saturday, June 26th, if the weather doesn't cooperate, it will be Sunday, June 27th, on the football field and basketball. Thank you very much, gang, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Our division reports, highway used 375 gallons of diesel fuel, 289 gallons for highway, 86 for non-highway. They patched holes in dirt roads on the paved roads, they started to remove the stolen equipment from some of the trucks. They repaired washouts on grassy swamp and lake ridge, they swept the roads, and they're getting their roads ready for paving. Water and sewer, completed their monthly drinking, water and wastewater sampling and reporting. Made adjustments to the chlorinator at the sewer plant, did water meter readings every Wednesday in the month of April. They turned water on to three buildings, repaired two broken curb valves, had three final meter readings. They attended a class provided by the New York Water Association for Sewer Education. Added two cobra pipe risers for septic tank, prepared a town zero-turn mower, and they had Cobra line pump out the sludge from the dosing tanks. Our building department had 21 construction inspections, seven certificates of compliance, 17 building permits, three accessory building garage, one renovation, three accessory building commercials, two decks, one commercial deck, two demolitions, driveway permit, electric permit, permit renewal, roof replacement, a well, nine CO and violation searches. The inspector and clerk attended training on 423 safeguards during construction. Money is collected by the office, $4,179.43. And the assessor. The assessor, county assessor meeting was postponed, it's successful, working on tentative rolls, deeds and bank information, pack mailings were done. He also had his inspection of properties. Feed volume continues to be higher than normal. Is Sue here for the Upper Delaware Council?
I hope so, can you hear me?
Thank you, Sue.
Hello, hello, yeah, good. Hi, everybody. Okay. Brief report, Tony Ritter described the sign at the Narrowsburg River Access, the DEC sign, as being really weathered. Can, oh, can you guys hear me? Wait, hold on.
Sue, we've lost you.
Hang on, okay, how about now?
Okay, that's good.
Yeah?
I can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so we're taking care of that DEC sign at the Narrowsburg River Access, which is in pretty bad shape. So Bill Rudge is, is taking care of that. The tag grant criteria, there was a very productive meeting between UDC Group and the NPS Superintendent Joe Salvatore. And it will result in the guidelines for tag grants will reflect expanded descriptions of projects, more in line with the past years and in line with the river management plans. So opening up to cultural projects, historic projects, things like that. And that makes everybody happy. The NPS and the Boy Scouts of America, their contract was just about to be approved when we had our meeting on May 6th. It was about a week from approval, so I'm sure it will go through. It's just a long chain of command that anything has to go through. The Skinner's Falls Mylinville Bridge, the comment period for anyone interested, has been extended to June 1st. The UDC has submitted a wonderful comment letter in favor of the rehabilitation option. Any of you folks who are interested in preserving a historic 1902 bridge, which is also a great tourist draw and one of the most visited places on the whole Upper Delaware. So what we're seeking to do is preserve that the way it is and rehabilitating the bridge. And if anybody wants to comment on that or wants any further information, I put my email here. And it's much easier than wasting your time now with a whole bunch of links. Just call me, I can tell you who to send your comments to. Litter sweep was wonderful, it was a huge success, over 300 people volunteered. From Hancock to Port Jervis, there were kids from Sullivan West involved, I believe, or the Community College, one or the other. But there was a lot of groups, a lot of crossover with new members of the community, a lot of crossover with Park Service, even getting out there in uniform and, you know, collecting garbage. So it was a very good event. And it will, and, and I just put down here to thank the Narrowsburg Beautification Group, because they've been doing this for years and years regularly. And so those groups that were in place, that were litter plucking for all these years, they're really the foundation of this effort. And, and it just got expanded. And UDC funding, one of the reasons we got to do the litter sweep was funding from a Pennsylvania grant. And stuff does not happen without some money. So there's some progress there, Congressman Delgado came to open up the Calicoon Creek Park project. And there was a lot of conversation, and so between he and also Senator Martucci, they're looking into why federal funding for our organization has been flat for 30 some odd years. And so I don't know what will come of that, but it's helpful. And I just want to remind everybody, the comp plan was approved by the UDC. It then went to the Park Service, so we are waiting for their approval. And I just wanted to give you a heads up, because they could have questions, and they're the final approval. So I, I, my sense of it is that comp plans are pretty easy, they are not laws, and they are visions. So I think everything will probably go just fine. And that's it, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
I don't, I don't have a question. Go ahead.
Sue, would you repeat that, did you say the Park Service does have questions about the comp plan?
No, not at all, I have no idea, it's just that it has to go, there's a chain. And UDC refers it to the Park Service, and they have the final say. So that is what is not back to us at this point. But there's no indication, there's no indication they have a problem. I'm just saying, you, you know, it's step one, step two.
I just want to mention that Evan and Shereen had gotten 20 volunteers from Sullivan County Community College to pick up trash at litter sweep. And they went from the Blue Fox Downriver and on 97, and they picked up over 60 bags of garbage that day in, in a few hours.
Isn't that incredible?
Yeah.
That is incredible. And as I was.
Thanks to those kids.
Thanks to those kids, and to also the, the whole effort of involving every level of the community. And it was litter leaders that did that, which is Evan's, was Evan did, he was our litter leader. And I will just share one thing with you, I was leaving PEX, and I was about to leave for Las Vegas to visit my son. And I said, you know, I'm gonna have to clean up that area right across from the real estate office, cause it is just too horrible. And on Sunday, it was clean, totally clean. I don't know who did that, but I mean, that's, that's the result. It's incredibly strong visual experience to drive down a road that's covered in trash and a road that's not. So thanks to everybody who, who made that happen.
Any other questions?
Um, Ben, just one other thing, if anybody feels bad because they missed out, you can go to the UDC office. We got a Sullivan Renaissance grant, and we have kits that you can just go over there, pick up the gloves, the vest, the bags, everything you need to pick up garbage, if you just look at your road and go, oh, I've gotta do something about this. We'll lend it to you, you'll bring it back, okay? And that's thanks to Sullivan Renaissance.
Any other questions for Sue? Thank you, Brandy Allen with the energy report. You're checking with the energy, I will move to Grant.
Okay, Grant, as Sue mentioned, the comprehensive plan was a grant from the UDC, and that's nearly finished. We're just waiting for the National Park Service comments. Little Lake Erie Culver Project, we desperately want to start that, but we're waiting for right-of-way approval from one owner of property. And they have sent some legal infra agreements to, to be looked at. So that is still pending. Sullivan Renaissance, we did apply for Silver Feather Award for the Community Impact Grant for the River Walk, but we were to not, we did not receive that, but we'll try them next year. The reason we didn't receive it is Renaissance is primarily a beautification group, and they felt that the grant primarily funded the design portion rather than the implementation of beautification, so they, they denied it. The water infrastructure project, Delaware engineer and engineering in the town continue to look for appropriate funding. We haven't identified anything yet. No word on the USDA grant, and then the green infrastructure grant, no word on that. That's it.
I don't believe so. And I believe that that right-of-way was one of the things that we just discussed a minute ago, was sent in, just needs to be.
Yes, well, what happened is the property owner submitted a rider to the agreement that the DOT had sent out. And so now the rider is being looked at by DOT to see if that's acceptable. And, and then we'll go from there. But, but if, do you have, are we going into a separate section?
Only if we have to.
Well, we might have to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do that.
Okay.
Any questions for Jane?
Ben, this is Star, I don't have a question for Jane, but I just wanted to let you know that the reason there was no energy report tonight was because Brandy went on a well-deserved one-week vacation. She's coming back today, and I don't think she had the 6:30 meeting on top priority when she got home, so that she'll be back.
Well, I know I had text her earlier, Star, regarding the, the congratulations from Aileen. So I told her, and since you're in the audience, I'll let you know, I'll just forward that to the energy committee.
Oh, I would like to just say something about that dedication. That was so well organized, it was so nicely done. They had, you know, audio, visual, and a lot of speakers, it was such a nice dedication, really.
I watched it from Virginia.
Yeah, see, yeah, the energy committee did a nice job, they really deserve credit on that.
And if you missed any of it, it's, it's been recorded and on some webpage, you can go on and, and, or Facebook page, you can go on and see the whole thing.
Thank you, Star. Moving into old business, I believe, Peter, you are here.
Yes, I just unmuted, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, everyone. Like two previous speakers, I also got an update on the status of the comprehensive plan at the National Park Service. I spoke with Ben earlier, and prior to that, Crystal reached out to the UDC. Anyhow, Ben and I thought maybe we could contact Cody Hendricks directly, he's the point person. So I did that, and to reiterate what was said, in Cody's words, it's been sent to region for signatures. So that's where it's at, he also indicated it was favorably received and approval is likely. And I said that the town board would like, likely wait to adopt a plan at a subsequent meeting. And then the, the other point of discussion on the comprehensive plan, it'll just take a few moments for me to cover some important points. During the development of the plan, in particular, the economic development chapter, there is a whole, there is a whole host of tasks to be done. At this point, the group agreed that we should form an economic development committee that would assist the town board and the whole town to implement the recommendations of that chapter. Subsequently, upon completion of the plan, and being that there's so many other chapters, the proposal to create a comprehensive plan implementation committee for the whole plan was floated. At that point, the committee developing the plan said, well, let's leave that up to the town board, because there's only so many volunteers and so forth, and we don't want to have too many committees. So in speaking with Ben during our conversation today, we batted around the idea of doing away with the concept of the specific economic development committee and going with a comprehensive plan implementation committee for the entire plan. We both agreed that was a good idea, that's probably your most common implementation structure. And to reiterate, the comprehensive plan committee really wanted the town board, because it's, you're in a driver's seat here, they wanted you to assign that part of the plan, they didn't want to recommend that. So I'm going to suggest to the town board that when you do adopt it, that you create this comprehensive plan implementation committee in lieu of the economic development one. And then I would make the final adjustments to the plan.
Peter, that would be a committee that if the board wishes to appoint, they would do that at the same meeting when we.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't have to be done right away. It could be something that's discussed, however, just agreeing to it in principle, so we can seal up the plan with a, you know, a sentence or two about that. And then you could, you could see who's interested and so forth, it doesn't have to happen right away.
Comments from the board on that? Jane?
Well, I, I think we did discuss that, we said the town board is, is in the driver's seat here. I, I agree with everything that he just said.
And you utilize one liaison from the board and then find the volunteers that are willing to.
Well, I think we said that, well, I guess the comp plan implementation committee could make the decision, but I thought we were going to divide it into chapters and have people assigned, a committee for a chapter under the comp plan implementation. But that would be up to the committee.
Jill, any comments on that?
No, I agree with him, I won't be around probably to be on a committee, but I'm happy to recommend if I think somebody's interested.
Yeah, I think that would be the thing, if, if it's something the board is, is thinking about doing, other recommendations of the consultant, and then see if we can find some prospective candidates to.
Yeah. I mean, a comp plan is, it's a nice piece of paper, but if it's not implemented.
Well, my, my conversations with Peter today, you know, it's a nice plan, it's got a lot of good ideas. If we don't move forward on the ideas, it becomes stagnant. And then, once it becomes stagnant, 10 years later, you sit here and say, we need to update our comp plan.
And, yeah, so you have to keep it moving.
It's all recommendations at the, for the board. Bruce or Al, any comment on that at all, or?
Well, I think it, it makes sense what Peter said, so.
Anything more on that, Peter, as far as the comp plan goes, as we're not prepared to render a resolution for it tonight?
Yeah, I think he adopted on one of the next times, and I'd be happy to discuss some of the details on, on how the committee works and how the work could be sorted out.
Okay, and you're gonna stay for the new business, correct?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Continuing on in old business, 3.2, our lawn mowing, as we received no bids on the last go-around for the lawn mowing, I had asked the board to allow me to go out and find somebody, and I have found Gwen Swenson for the lawn care services for the town, effective April 20th, 2021, at the rate of $25 per hour, and that is utilizing his own equipment and fuel.
Yeah, that's a bargain, I move that we hire Gwen Swenson for lawn care services, effective April 20th.
I have a motion on the floor from Jane, a second? I have a second from Bruce, Jill?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I have an I. Well, there should be an ending. I would move to amend your motion to say for the calendar year of 2021.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's a continuing, unless the board is fine with a continuation of that one.
I think it should have an ending.
Yeah, okay.
I have a second from Bruce. Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
And I have an I. 3.3, general code estimate, the town clerk has an estimate to revise our general code for the amount between $670 and $770. This is for the second supplemental code.
What does that mean?
For our local laws, both of them that were set last year, they are not in our code book. So they, then they review them, and they will send us a print copy. They will also remove all the old information, all the new information. We'll go over the fields and see the key divisions, which we did. They also found a slight mistake that happened, and I'm not sure where, but another town, they were able to. Another town, we can see in our local law, all of your state sites, oddly enough, in a whole other county. So thanks to them, they found that.
Does this, but does this make it easy? So if we want to find information on, on dog control, we just put in dog control?
We already have, yeah, so this is DPO 360, the town code that we already have, already exists. Anytime that we pass local laws, we continue to do it with every law we pass, either quarterly or annually, that we reject the general code, or I reject the general code, and say, these are our new laws, they will then take that group of laws, and that's what we're paying now is for.
Integration?
Yeah, integration, if you will. We don't have to change everything online, as well as the hard copies, the shipping, and all of that. But I requested them to give me an estimate fired to us, saying, yes, go ahead and do that.
Pretty much a maintenance program for our.
Yeah, that's okay, I just wish that we had something for resolutions too. You know, when I go back to the minutes, looking for a resolution on something.
So another part of general code, which is fairly in our history, that I've been working with them, I had sat one of my meetings. I can start, now I can add documents, so if you type in "well license," you're gonna get our local laws. I'm also gonna pull up a blank copy of dog license application form now. We can upload those, there are certain resolutions that are important resolutions, we can also insert them, so they'll be searchable. And then we search them, yeah.
What are the old resolutions? I mean, I often have to go back and use grant applications to show a resolution from the board, and I never got.
We're also building a reservation book. So every, after every meeting, along with the minutes. Any, any important resolutions are now ending up in a book.
Okay. All right, so you want a motion?
A motion to accept the estimate from general code for about between 670 and 770.
Is, we can, we can pay for this out of the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'll move that.
I have a motion by Jane, a second by.
Second.
Al. Al and Jill?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I have an eye. 3.4 is a budget transfer. I don't know why the word sewer fund is there, but we're going to take that word out from what is seen on your screen. Increase line A6989.6, the food digester by $12,000. And we're going to decrease A3001, the state aid by 12,000. And what this is, is there were bills that were paid for consulting that we were reimbursed for the state. I believe it was with Jen Porter and the company that she used. So that money was put out by the digester, which it was supposed to. But when the state aid came back, the reimbursement came back, it went into the state, state aid line. Instead of going back into the line for the food digester. So thereby, what it did was it wiped out the money in the digester that really should have been put back in.
So it's no way increasing spend?
Correct, it's not an increase. We're just moving it from one budget line to another. And I would make that motion to approve the transfer of funds.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Jane, is there any discussion on that or questions? Jill?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I have an eye. At this point, I will open the floor to public comment before new business.
Hi. Do you hear me? This is, yes, Wanda from the Narisburg Beautification Group?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to know if the highway department scheduled the cutting of the knotweed down by Little Lake Erie? Or if you could remind them so we can stay on top of that this year?
I can remind them for sure if they have not scheduled it.
Excellent, excellent. And thanks for the parking lot on June 5th. I hope you guys all come and all remember that the litter pluck goes to June 30th. You can hand in your clear bags with those stickers on them.
I don't know if there's much garbage left after they, they ravaged it all.
Well, you'd be, you'd be surprised. It does grow back and having that opportunity to just take it to the transfer station with a sticker on it. It's a good thing that people should know to June 30th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye bye.
Ben, I have a question. This is Star.
Yes, Star.
Um, I was trying to activate the record function for this meeting. And I kept getting a pop up saying that you had to have the host's permission to record it. How does that work? Because I would like to make recordings. I thought recordings were dirty gear for these meetings and apparently they're not. And when you try to turn it on, you get told, no, you don't have permission to do that. So who is the host that I have to ask so that I could activate the recording in future?
That would be the town clerk.
Crystal, okay.
Yes. You're able to record now.
Okay, I also noticed that, I'm not that I need my picture on the screen, but it just has a square with my name on it. I don't know how to turn that off. There are occasions when I don't want to be on the screen, but I wouldn't like to have it just summarily removed. So I don't know how that gets corrected, but I would appreciate it if somebody could look into that.
Yeah, Star, your video was taken off because it was pointing in a direction you probably would prefer to not be. If, if the screen is not pointing in proper directions, then I do turn screens off for people or hold for you.
Okay, so you, I just see that the host has asked you to start your video. Is, is that going to be every time we have a meeting that I want to record? I have to ask the host first to activate it or let me activate it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, the minutes, I did have a copy of the agenda. And I noticed that there were quite a number of things that have changed. So where can I go to get the amended agenda? I know, Crystal, you said that, you know, things get added at the last minute, but this was really scrambled. Number three was public comments instead of old business. Old business had several areas.
Star, we're aware, we're aware that there's changes and you don't have to point them out.
Okay.
Sometimes that happens, sometimes that happens in a fluid situation. Such as this where, like the comp plan, you know, up to the last minute, we were hoping to be able to put something like that in, so.
So how do I get the corrected one?
It usually appears on the, on the screen when we start the meeting.
And I can print that?
Other than that, we could probably try to get it on top of the, onto the website and you could print it off the website.
I just, I would just like to have a copy of what the, the actual agenda was. So where can I go to?
I can, I can forward it. I just got an email from Crystal a little while ago. Star, I'm forwarding it to you.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully that won't have to happen every time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, I have a question about the mowing services. I know that it was said on the agenda that it was $25 an hour for the, per, for the mowing. Is there an estimate or is there a cap that once it reaches a certain amount? It, you know, there's some sort of review of what's been done or how much has been done? Or is there, you know, some way to determine how much is spent on mowing? So it's not just a blanket $25 per hour? And then in addition to that, is there anything, any provision in the contract for insurance? Does the mower need to have their own insurance? Is the town liable? Who's liable for that? If there's a problem, if there's an error, if there's a mistake or if there's somebody hurt?
He's hired as a town employee. There is money in the budget that is budgeted for the park maintenance. And that is what we utilize. And going through right now, the budget, I see that we're at an acceptable rate for what the hourly rate is. So that we're not going to be going over budget. Right now, we're at about 20% of what we budgeted for the park maintenance personnel. So knowing that we've got about four months' worth of mowing in there. Taking into consideration that July and August are usually slower months for mowing. Because of the weather conditions, we should be fine. But yes, the answer to your question is, there's a budget line in there and that's what we utilize to determine how much we're going to do.
Okay.
This gives us a little bit more flexibility. Because like, we just purchased a bank parking lot and the bank itself. So there's added maintenance in those things. It would normally not have been in our, our bidding procurement. So we're able to now take into consideration those things.
Okay, so if it reaches a certain level, then it's reviewed? Or is there a process put in place? I know you said that there's a budget, but once that budget's reached, are there additional safeguards in places the board meet to determine if, you know, additional?
Yeah, the board will determine whether or not they wish to take funds from another budget line in order to continue that? Or whether they discontinue what they've been, been going? But part of the, part of the process is that I will keep an eye on the budget every month to know how many hours are being put in. What is the work that's being done? And am I going to be able to keep it underneath the budget line?
And then as far as, you said that the person was hired as a, if they're a town employee. So that means that they fall under the town's insurance. They didn't have to have their, I know that they're using their own equipment.
That's correct.
Something happens to their own equipment. Is the town now going to have to replace that equipment?
No, that is their responsibility.
Okay, and if somebody gets injured, now it's the town's responsibility to, to take care of any sort of.
That would be with any town employee, if they're injured or resulted in the employee.
Is that the normal process for the, the mowing contract?
No, it is not. We received no bids.
Nobody at all contacted you all for bid before or after the last hearing? Because I know that there, you had said that there was a public notice that had been put out. And then at the last meeting, I believe it was, and you were going to look for somebody. So nobody at all contacted between those two?
Nobody submitted a bid.
Nobody submitted a bid, okay. How would one go about submitting a bid?
They would read the legal notice in the paper and submit the bid in accordance with the procedure that's set forth in the paper.
No, I'm sorry. Between last meeting, when you had said that there was no bid submitted, and this meeting now. If somebody in the audience had wanted to submit a bid.
The bids were closed. The bids were closed after the last meeting because none were received. I requested permission from the board to seek somebody to do the work.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Stewart?
Hi, Ben, thanks. Kudos to the litter pluck committee. I was amazed at how many people were out and how clean 97 looked. Unfortunately, shortly thereafter, those people who choose to throw their junk on other people's lawns instead of on their own. Were back out on 97. And one of the biggest offenders is a single, the owner of a single family dwelling on 97. That is being used as transient housing. There is a full-size dumpster there. It is overflowing. Bear have gotten into it and are scattering that garbage all over 97. Who in the town would be responsible for seeing to it that that homeowner is notified and made to clean up their mess? This is, this is a place where 10 to 20 cars are parked every weekend, you know, as a transient housing rental. Which is just, it's really disgusting what they're doing with the place.
I think maybe a letter from the town would be a good start. I could draft a letter to them. I know which day he's talking about because I went by early in the morning.
Code enforcement?
Yeah, Stevie, there, I'll talk to the code enforcement officer and if need be, either he or myself can draft a letter and move forward on that for you.
Thanks, Ben, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other public comment before I move into new business?
If they're running it as a hotel, 15 or 20 cars there, that's not a bad.
New business 5.1 is the zoning board of appeals training. I know I've spoken to Ken about this and I also have spoken to Peter about it. And what I'm looking for is for board approval to have different training sessions on evenings when the zoning board of appeals is not in session. Or they have a training before a particular session. The current rate right now for Peter is 6250 an hour. His end of it, we would, and I, he agrees with this, to do on a Zoom. And whether Ken would be here or zooming in also for the, for the training. Will alleviate some of the cost to it. Any comments from the board regarding that?
I think it makes sense.
Peter's the best person to do that because he knows our code.
Knows our code, work for the state?
No.
I hear Ken is rather knowledgeable.
I think that they're starting that, didn't they? Elect to do that.
They had a discussion, but they want, they want to do some training. And they talked about, they actually scheduled start early next month. Because they don't know whether they'll actually have business or not, but they, they scheduled a work session. They weren't aware that there was the possibility that, that there was some support coming from the town board and that is there.
There is money in the zoning budget that we would be able to, you know, I mean, I don't believe we're going to get into the tens of thousands of dollars to do this, but.
How long would each session be?
That would be up to, counting up to Peter. Peter, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Normally, your sessions would be what, an hour, hour and a half?
Yeah, you have the opportunity to ask questions and have discussions. So the, the timing is always a little bit, you know, unknown. Two hours to three hours would cover everything. The, the zoning board of appeals role is, is quite a dedication on the part of those people to serve your town. There's so much to know. And training it with the state, we were careful not to do too much at once. And I, I think that's what this board would like to do is maybe get two servings, possibly three. And then that would cover everything.
And this also would go towards their required time?
Yeah, so the, the state passed a law in 2007 requiring four hours of training for ZBA planning board and county planning board. Now, what exactly constitutes training is up to the elected body. So if we go through, say, two and a half hours, you can call that four. You can pass a, a local law that says, you know what? We just want to have two hours of training and instead of four, you have the right to modify it. You can even opt out, which of course is not recommended. So it's, it's up to you. I would say going through the full ZBA presentation is probably worth four hours. Importantly though, if you have turnover on your board, you want the new people or person to catch up.
I would say we could probably start out with two sessions, three sessions. I mean, I don't know if you really want to go more than two hours per session, do you?
No, I don't think so. Like Peter said, you know, there, it, there's a lot to it and you don't want to overwhelm. And then everybody gets glazed over. They've already put a full day in and they come here at 6:30, 7 o'clock and.
Or even, you know, two or three hour and a half sessions.
All right, so you want a motion?
I think that you got to limit it to an hour session. Because, just because of what Ken just said and also what Peter said.
So should we go for a high number and say a total of six hours of training? In other words, this, that, that would be our cap on it. And if they only use three, are they use two or?
Well, are you saying that because of the training for them or for the money for Peter?
The money for Peter.
Well, because you have to expect that he has to do something in addition to just that hour.
Well, we discussed that. Peter, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I mean, let's just say an hour to get ready for it. If there's other things that come my way, for example, maybe I partner with Ken and we modify slides. Well, then that would be, you know, some additional time. I just need, I have the slides in the bag already. The, the state, you know, it's, it's public information. I taught, taught the course many times and I've already checked with the fellow that. Now has a job that I had and I asked him if there's any new case law and there really isn't. So I'm just about ready to go, maybe an hour at the most on the prep. And I think that three hours will capture everything that we need to do, including questions and discussion. And if you have other budgeted money, you may want to save it for something else.
My sense is, and Peter takes the lead, I'll, I'll be there in the support role for him.
I would make a motion to approve three hours of training for the zoning board of appeals with the attorney for the town and for Peter, with Peter Manning.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second, Jill?
Hi.
Bruce?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
And I have an eye. Peter, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I may stay on. This next agenda item looks interesting.
It certainly is. I forwarded to the board the smart cities grant. That was a grant for Wi-Fi on the Main Street, Bridge Street area, which the town's portion of it would be just, just over 16,000, shy of $17,000. Questions from the board regarding that?
What was the coverage again?
It's going to be from fifth down main and up bridge to the town hall here. So pretty much from the end of Rasmussen's building to up here.
For 16,000?
My question is, I think Jill, at the last one of the meetings that we had, mentioned that there was already Wi-Fi there. So.
I'm sorry, not that there's Wi-Fi there, but most of the businesses on Main Street have Wi-Fi. To spend, so to me to spend $16,000, it's, it's overkill. That's, that's a lot of money for that, I think.
Well, I, I kind of agree with you, Jill, but I, I mean, there's no reason to expend the money if, if the people already have the Wi-Fi there.
And it's not benefiting, it's not benefiting where the areas that we need work on, which is on the outskirts. How do the kids do their homework in Beaverbrook? I don't know.
Okay. My sense is that this is not going to move forward unless I have a motion from the board to authorize me to contract with them. Any other board comment on that? 5.3, the Aresburg beautification plant swap on Saturday, June 5th. A motion to approve use of the parking lot for the plant swap. I have a motion by Jane, a second.
A second.
No? Bruce? Al?
I just need to know where, define the municipal parking lot.
The one here on Bridge Street. I'm sorry.
Over here?
Yes.
The library?
The library parking lot.
Okay. I'm an aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am an aye. 5.4, we did have a request from, and I don't believe it was right here, but it was at the work session. The speed display regarding the town actually going out and purchasing their own speed sign. I have been in contact with the county and in order to see if this is something that the town wishes to do further. They will be setting one up in town in the near future. I spoke with the commissioner of public works. He confirmed that it is coming out. He did not have an exact date for that, so. That, that is in the works. And adds no cost to the town. Jane, we talked about a public hearing date for the Delaware Engineering. That's a re.
Yeah, for the Delaware Engineering did the preliminary engineering report for the water district. And they would like to do a public hearing before the board adopts that. And they will come and do a live presentation or live in Zoom next month.
Do we want that at the regular board meeting or the workshop?
Well, I pushed the meeting.
Oh, the regular board meeting. It should be for everybody to see.
Oh, isn't the workshop where we go?
Yes, but I think if more people come, come.
That would be June the 8th.
Right.
And do we want to set that before the regular town board meeting or at the start of the town board meeting?
I, I think in the beginning.
Okay. Do you want to do it at 6:30 or before 6:30? The 6:30 start?
6:30 start because people might, how many people do we have on now? 22, yeah.
To make a motion to set a public hearing for Delaware Engineering regarding a preliminary report for the water district and to set that for 6:30 PM on June the 8th.
Does that have to go in the paper or because it's part of the meeting?
It's not public hearing as far as more of an informational hearing.
Well, it depends on what you're talking about. I mean, if you're talking about adopting a map planner report for the, for, you know, an improvement to the, to an existing special district, that's governed by section 203B of the, of the town law and then you do have to have a public hearing on it. I, I'd like that maybe even whoever you're working with at Delaware Engineering, check with me, just check in with me and make sure we're coordinated. Do this the right way. Because it's, it's critical that you do this the right way before you can move forward with spending money on it.
Yeah, right.
Well, technically, we'll keep that date.
Yeah, it's sort of authorized. So I might, and maybe, you know, in the next couple of days, I could chat with them, Jane, and we can sort out exactly what they're trying to do. I, I've worked with Delaware Engineering and other businesses. They're great.
I've got that forth of the motion. A second?
A second.
Second by Jane. Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Any other new business that I've missed?
Water rates, but it's not here.
Well, that, I think we're ready for you and, you and Al to meet with Dave. Because we, we've gone over them, so we could bring them to the work session or do you want to do it at the work? I, I mean, I think the two of you should meet before the next work session. And then we can discuss them at the work session and bring them forth at the, the June meeting.
Okay. So Al and I meet with Dave.
Dave, you could go over the.
What we came up with.
What we'd worked on.
Okay. So we'll set a meeting with.
I would like to be privy to what you worked on.
That's, I do. It's, it's pretty simple.
Well, I think what it'll be is that the two of you can meet as a committee with the water and sewer superintendent so they can be laid out and explained to you and then you can have your input before it comes back to the board. Okay.
I, I mean, all I would be sending you is the rates, but you would want to know how we can.
I think a sit down with Dave and Jane will bring clarity to.
So after this meeting, we'll set a time that I'm hoping that they.
Are we going to continue with Zoom or are we going back live? What is the board's pleasure?
What is the state's?
As of right now, you can continue to do it through June 9th.
Oh, and our next meeting is June 8th.
No, I, I, I expect that that will extend. What happens is the governor is periodically extending and it keeps moving out. And every week or so, he, he basically extends it out another 30 days from where that point is. And just in the last couple of days, that's what happened. He signed something that extended that general order, executive order, that sort of blanket and everything. So right now, as I understand it, it's through June 9th. So you can continue to do that and have people participate remotely, board members participate remotely. Once that comes to an end, board members are going to have to be here, public hearings. I mean, you can decide whether you want to zoom out a meeting or not for people to watch, but, but to participate.
We can leave our next, we'll leave our June 8th meeting as this meeting is. We'll leave it as a hybrid.
I expect it's going to continue to get a.
I will open the floor for public comment.
Sorry, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
The Main Street Wi-Fi. Ben, you probably know better than I on this, but didn't Brandy say that the, the new lights that we're putting in are supposed to have a feature that gives all of Main Street Wi-Fi capability?
Yes, that's correct. And that's, that's what we were referring to. The Wi-Fi would be put in modules that are on top of the lights that are on Main Street. And the Wi-Fi would then come out of either the bank or right now the town hall. And that's how they would bounce the Wi-Fi along, but it would be part of the, be part of the streetlights. The total cost, I believe, came $60,000?
$53,000.
Yeah, $53,000 was the cost of it and just over 16,000 was the, what the town share would be in order to have that happen. But yes, you are correct. It would be part of the, the new streetlights that were put in.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask was, the TEC has been trying to go the next step as a climate smart community, upgrading to silver. One of the things that gives us the points, that gets us the silver designation is that the town code enforcement officer takes a training in like upgrading and being aware of climate-saving energy and installation on buildings and things like that. Has there been any, any process or progress made on having that training set up for the code enforcement officer? Because once we get that silver designation, it opens a whole huge amount of grant money that you can apply for based on the fact that you've attained the silver standing. So I know Brandy's asked about this a couple of times and it never seems to get solidified as yes, we can or no, we won't. So that, that's my question. Is any kind of additional training for attendance by the code enforcement officer in the works?
Just to find the course.
Yeah, I don't know what his training is. He just attended three different, four different hours of training.
Yeah, but you can't do it.
I'm sorry.
You can't do it with just general training on code enforcement. It's got to have a component of how you, a judge, or, or look at the buildings that are going up. Is he going to include, you know?
Has the energy committee submitted to the building department what those courses are?
I don't think so because we were waiting and talking to you, Ben. So I'm sure that.
Well, I don't know, starting, you know, starting to be very blunt, I don't know what courses you need him to take. So I can't say, hey, can you take these courses to assist the energy committee in obtaining silver recognition? But if we, I do know that he has taken some courses that would probably satisfy what you're asking him to do. But maybe the conversation needs to be with the code enforcement officer and the Tustin Energy Committee to say, Jim, can you help us if you take these courses? They're going to allow us to get a better designation.
Okay, so we understood that Brandy was talking to you about asking the code enforcement and I understand what you're saying. You want Brandy to go to Jim and say, we need these things.
I, I'll go to Jim and I'll tell Jim to contact the energy committee or send you an email to find out what the courses are.
Fine.
And then that way he can, he can find out if, maybe he's taken some of these courses that are going to be able to assist you. And then, you know, he's going to have, he'll then go with, are these courses going to help him also with his continuing education? Because I, I will let you know right now that he's going to say, I'm going to take the ones that are going to help my continuing education before I take ones that do not help my continuing education. So you, you definitely want to know which ones that he needs or how many hours he needs. And then let's find the ones that are going to assist in his education and also assist you and the energy committee to get your, your silver designation.
You, you send, you send an email to him and I'll talk to Brandy when she gets back and we can work it out that way. As long as we have.
That's easy enough to do.
Good.
Vicky?
Vicky, unmute yourself.
I see a lot of hand movement.
She does.
Elaine? You're on mute also, Elaine.
I'm not. I just undid it. Can you hear me?
Yep.
This is just a comment relative to the Wi-Fi on Main Street.
Okay, go ahead again, Elaine.
Okay, thanks. It, it's just a point of information. For a while Frontier had put four modems on the, on the porch ceiling of DBAA. And they allowed us, when we had festivals and events, to plug, plug them in. Then we had it all wired to one, one box. And so that the merchants on the street and the people who were, you know, needing a phone system or whatever could have Wi-Fi for merchandising. It's impossible to do anything like that with, with what we have, with, with the individual businesses. And while I think, you know, I, I don't know what your $16,000 covers for how long or for what. But anyway, that's one consideration is that Wi-Fi for any kind of public event is really not possible the way it's set up. So I'm just throwing that out there that, so it's, it's something that Frontier gave us and then took, took it away. Because Frontier got sold or something. I don't know what happened. So there isn't, that doesn't exist anymore, just to let you know, Elaine.
Elaine, and I don't know if you would know the answer to this, and I, I apologize for trying to throw you under the bus to find out. But when the town does their agreements, their license agreements, like with Time Warner or Spectrum, would that be something that we could actually attempt to put in there? Much like when we talked back in the 2000s about, you know, the arts lions having like a, a TV station?
Yeah, I, I don't see why not. I think the town has never really taken advantage of that threat. That, you know, that we could get something more because they always want to raise the price. So it seems like just for general town business, that could be part of the contract or, or part of an agreement outside of the contract.
Great idea.
Okay, something to look at.
Okay.
Thank you, Elaine.
Sure.
Vicky Alden?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. So for the CPA training, I'm just very happy they took my advice. And they actually scheduled the training for June 14th, 6:30. My question is, well, we, the public is able to. I'm sorry, because I'm spending time with my mom in LA. That's why we are at this store right now. I'm so sorry. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm just mentioning ZBA, the training is terrific. I'm just very happy they took my advice and they scheduled for the training next month, 14th. I believe it's the 6:30 and I'm wondering if the public can participate for this training as well? If it open for public.
It is a public meeting. There would be no public comment and there would be no questions allowed from the public because it's a training session.
Oh, yeah. Not, I mean, I just want to join for the training as well. I'm not making any comments or opinions. Is I able to?
It's a public meeting. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. And for the Main Street Wi-Fi, I think the board made the right call because I think the, the town is more than just Main Street and the $16,000, I think they can spend, you know, more wisely. So I think the board made a good call. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public comment? Any other public comment? Board comment?
Well, my feeling on the Main Street Wi-Fi is, why aren't these merchants on, that are coming in for your street events using their own hotspot? They're the one making the money off it.
It's available to anybody.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Use your mobile hotspot, save the town a lot of money. You want to make the money at the event, use your own device.
Well, I think that's what we do.
Well, that's what they should continue to do, it shouldn't be on the town to pay for them to make money.
Meeting reminders, our next work session will be June the 1st at 6:30 PM, and our regular town board meeting will be June the 8th at 6:30 PM. And the public hearing at the regular meeting will begin at 6:30. If there is no other comment from the board, I would make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a second from Bruce. Al?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Now I am an aye. Thank you, everyone.
Right off.